I want to go ahead and do a check real quick. Commissioner Barnes, are you with us? Good morning. Commissioner Barnes, are you with us?
There she is.
Okay.
You're going to have to unmute.
Are you with us, Commissioner Barnes? Okay, well, we see her. I don't know that she can hear us. Can you hear us, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure you were with us. Okay, so
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and get started with the meeting. Welcome. I want to remind everybody to please silence your cell phones. You can do that for me really quick, please. And I also would like to introduce Alana Sue. She's going to be our commissioner for today. She's joining us. So if everybody would like to get started, Alana, would you like to start us, please? Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we begin this commission meeting with gratitude and thanks for all the blessings that have been given. We remember those who are less fortunate, and we work to be a blessing in their lives. We remember our men and women in uniform around the world and their families who sacrificed so much. And Father, we remember our medical providers and our first responders, who closer to home put our needs first before theirs. For all of those we remember this morning, we ask for your safety and blessings upon them. And for this meeting, we ask that our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us as we address the important matters of today. For all of this, we are grateful. We say thankful, thank you, and we say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to open it up at this time to public comment. If there's anything that you're wishing to speak on that's a public hearing, please hold it till then. If not, if there's anybody that would like to come forward at this time, please come to the podium over here. You need to state your name and address for the record, please. Is there anybody? Everybody's going to be quiet this morning, okay? We will come back to the approval of amendments for May 12th and May 16th.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barnes?
One more.
Commissioner Barnes?
Her lips moved and said, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We're going to, I'm going to change the agenda around a little bit. If we could move to consent agenda, is there any commissioner wishing to pull anything at this time? I do want to recognize that, because I know the board always likes to do this, is on item under Public Works, the Melville Stormwater and the Melville Stormwater Improvement Shriver's area, those are infrastructure sales tax. So it's always worth mentioning, if you ought to know that that's your sales tax you voted on. Doing great projects. And I also would like to pull 8B4, please, the precast, the fortified precast. Does any other commissioner have anything to pull? Okay, so what I'd like to do is before we move for approval, I'd like to go ahead and ask the applicant or Pete to please come forward if you'd like to present and tell us about the good news. Oh, Sarah's with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Sarah Smith, Economic Development Coordinator, Planning and Development Services, Economic Development Division, for the record. First, I just want to thank you all for your diligence in helping to keep St. Lucie County safe and moving forward. And then I just want to say it's an honor for me to stand before you today to talk about Fortified Precast Technologies, a targeted industry and economic development project that manufactures solid concrete steel reinforced walls. These type of developments exceed industry standards, which results in faster build time, cheaper insurance premiums, and you can only imagine how St. Lucie County would grow. Primary industries such as this provide opportunities for industry clustering and higher wage jobs for county residents. Additionally, we see Fortified Precast Technologies as a forerunner in the growth and development of Airport West Commerce Park and believe it will pave the way for other projects of high caliber. The ability to produce projects that specialize in innovative technology, I believe embodies the vision towards a more competitive St. Lucie County and speak to the endless possibilities for growth and future advancement. Moreover, we feel that the commission and county residents can be confident knowing that all of the economic development incentives discussed today are performance-based and require a rigorous compliance process that will be set forth in future agreements, brought back before you for further consideration at a later date. Compliance will also require employee wages be well above St. Lucie County's average wage, currently eighteen dollars and ninety-four cents per hour, and employee benefits exclusive of average wage requirements. With that said, I'd like to turn the mic over to Pete Tesh, the President of the Economic Development Council of St. Lucie County, a core supporter of our business community. Pete will give you a brief overview of the project and invite business owner, entrepreneur, and visionary Barry Stem of Fortified Precast Technologies up to speak to you further. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Tipton. I'm Pete Tesh, President of the Economic Development Council. And Alana, it's nice to see you, and hopefully this is a start of a great career for you. Sarah Smith did absolutely fabulous job of explaining the project. I don't think I could add much more. However, we do have a very quick PowerPoint presentation that for the viewing audience that we can take a look at some of the economic factors.
Precast.
I have it. There you go.
That's great. So as Sarah mentioned, this is Fortified Precast Technologies, and with us today is CEO Barry Stem. Just like to go over some of the quick items regarding the project. Could advance the next slide, that'd be great. Nothing like a PowerPoint presentation to kick off Tuesday morning, right? So as Sarah mentioned, this is Fortified Precast Technologies, a state-of-the-art manufacturing operation that's coming to St. Lucie County, and we're looking at the Airport West Commerce Center. Next slide, please. Couple of photos depicting what the inside, the interior of the layout would be with some of the sophisticated machinery coming from Volart, a German precision manufacturer, equipment manufacturer. The idea is that to make these precast homes in a technology-efficient way, looking at, you know, building sixteen homes per day. Next slide, please. Just a couple of things about the project that would be interest to the commission and the public. This is a new-to-Florida manufacturing operation. It is a startup. The facility will be about approximately a hundred thousand square feet. Capital investment, building, machinery and equipment, seventeen point five million. Sarah mentioned a hundred and fifty-five jobs and an average wage of almost fifty thousand dollars, or annual salary of fifty thousand dollars. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, this is in, the proposed site is in Lot Four, about a seventeen-acre site in Airport West Commerce Center, right off of Kings Highway. We really appreciate the help of Peter Jones and Stan Payne in trying to arrange with the federal agencies to take this piece of property into a lease and then a purchase for this. So we see this as a great opportunity to bring not only an excellent company to the community, but also kickoff Airport West Commerce Center. Next slide, please. Well, that's it. Revenue is the key to success. So with that, I'd like to, if it's okay, Madam Chair, to bring Barry Stem up, introduce him to the commission and see if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barry?
Thank you. Pete Tesh. I've known Pete Tesh fifteen years, so.
Sorry about that.
He's I'm glad St. Lucie's got him.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Barry Stem, CEO of Fortified Precast Technologies. And this is something that we've been working on for a long time. You don't do these things overnight. And we are looking to create the most advanced precast manufacturing in the whole country. There's nothing like this in the country. So this is going to be a game changer in the construction industry. We see this advancing and improving the quality of life for residential, reduction of energy costs, and also reduction of insurance longevity. There's all kinds of factors that are going to be beneficial with this system once it's in the hands of the public and we can diversify it out. We're looking at other plants, other sites within the state, but St. Lucie County is going to be the corporate headquarters, and we'll be able to improve on those numbers that you've seen there. So we look forward to working with the county, and we think that we very much like the site. Great access to the interstate, turnpike. And you really want to be in the path of progress, path of growth. So we, I targeted St. Lucie County four years ago as a place that we would like to work with. So I appreciate working with the county and county staff, and certainly Pete Tesh and EDC has been very, very helpful. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I'm glad you chose us. I know that there was other choices out there, so I'm glad that you see our vision and that you believed in us. Because I'm excited for this. It's a new way of the future to build homes, and so thank you for choosing us. And I know that we have a rock star in our EDC department, so thank you for recognizing them.
Madam Chair? Well, I'm a citizen now. I moved here a month ago.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Stem, welcome back.
Thank you.
It's good to see you back here, and we're happy that this is a day we're announcing this. I see a future marketing opportunity for the islands. We've seen devastation in last year's storms. And to rebuild the islands, I think that these types of homes will be able to withstand those types of storms in the future. That's a great opportunity. We're well situated for that. You recognized our roadway system. I'd just like to remind you that we do have an apprenticeship program from the building trades. It actually will be readily available to help you get started. And we're grateful that you are here, and if there's anything that we can do to assist you. I think this board has been very good at moving things forward and finding ways to solutions to challenges. But moreover, I'm so excited that you're at the Airport Business Park. You will be, as stated here, a rock star, because that is going to build and begin the nucleus of what will be the future of that business park. So I'm very, very pleased that you're the first one in the door.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Maybe for the record, I need to let people know that my mother's last name was Mitchell, so there could be a conflict of interest.
You have to determine that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you, Barry. I had a great conversation with you and Pete and the other evening, and I'm excited. This is a new technology that'll not only expand and make our homes safer, but good paying jobs, and that's, at the end of the day, that's a home run. So thank you again.
Yeah, we look forward to this very much. I thank everybody here. Appreciate it.
And you know, I just thought about something. So we actually have two homes that are like this in St. Lucie County. They were built by Mr. Jimmy Turner, who crossed over the other day. So how appropriate is it? It kind of like in his memory, you're here today presenting to us, because this was a dream that that man had ten years ago. So I just think that it's perfect timing for you to be here today, kind of like in honor of him to be able to do that. So the vision was here a long time ago, and it's great that you're here to pass it forward. So thank you.
I appreciate that very much. You know, there have been other companies. I mean, I started, I first went to Finland in two thousand and three, and I saw the first plant. At that point in time, I realized that this is going to change construction in the U.S. If we can just bring that technology over here. So I've made multiple trips to Europe, looked at countries in Germany and Austria, Finland, Norway, looking at these different automated precast plants. You have some major players here that manufacture the equipment. You have five of them. And we think that Volart Group, I believe, is the best, the most advanced of those groups, and they've given us an exclusivity agreement. I've known Hans Volart now for sixteen years. So we'll have a good working relationship. The other thing that I would like to bring up is that affordable housing, workforce housing, there's a stat that's hard to believe, but there's a shortage here today in the U.S., no, I'm sorry, in Florida of five hundred and eighty thousand units. That's how much is in the demand for workforce housing, affordable housing. And we see this as a catalyst. We're going to probably earmark thirty-five, forty percent of our production towards that. We can do multi-story housing precast, which is really going to be a real advantage over other building systems that are out there today.
Well, it's exciting. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
And before we go to motion, I also, is Mariah here? Well, I just want to recognize Mariah, because we have four grants that are coming through and things and moving transportation forward. So I always like to recognize stuff when they do great things. So Diana, thank you to your girls. They did a good job on this. Okay, if there's nobody else, I'm open to a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Hutchinson.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to jump back again. And Mr. Tipton, you have something that you would like to present today?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. A little pretext to this. On March 12th, St. Lucie County was the proud recipient of five awards at the Twenty-third Annual Safety Council of Palm Beach County Awards Luncheon. The risk management team won the award merit for vehicle safety and the award of merit for worker safety for the third year in a row. St. Lucie County was also the recipient of a special recognition award for workplace safety, as well as two heroism awards. The heroism award is bestowed upon individuals who go above and beyond the call of duty and perform an act of heroism on the job or in their community. Today, and she's just learning about this now as I say her name.
Surprise.
Ms. Erin Cartmill of Environmental Resources will be belatedly receiving her heroism award for her rescue efforts in saving the life of a patron that went astray at the Oxbow. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Cartmill by having her director, Amy Griffin, read the nomination letter that she wrote in order for Ms. Cartmill to receive this honor. So Amy?
Touch this. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you, Howard. Congratulations, Erin. It was interesting getting here under a surprise, so we almost didn't get her here. She's already been out in the field setting up our Summer of Success interns, working down at the Oxbow today. But it was with great pleasure that we nominated Erin Cartmill for this Palm Beach County Safety Council Heroism Award. This is just yet another example, but a fantastic one, of your staff going above and beyond the call of duty on a normal, normal day. So real short, I'm going to share what happened. It was July twenty nineteen, and we had a hiker, Les Halffield. He was going to try to make it today, but he couldn't. He took to the trails at the Oxbow that he'd been many times before, but this day, he chose a different route, that he hadn't taken, the longer one. And of course, he wasn't prepared with water. He didn't have a hat, he didn't have a cell phone, bug repellent, anything. Well, quickly, because of his chronic lung disease, he became over-exhausted. He kind of lost the ability to go on. He had to lie down on the trail. And he lied there for some time until another hiker came along, a father and a son, who ran back to the Oxbow where Erin and her coworkers were. And they quickly gathered the equipment that was necessary, including an AED, the trail wheelchair that we have out there at the Oxbow, water, a first aid kit. When they got back to Les, they gave him some water, sat with him, gave him some time to recover. And two strong young volunteers that Erin was working with that day, they helped to push Mr. Halffield all the way back to the Oxbow, where he was able to cool off and recuperate. Thankfully, Erin and her team were prepared, and that wasn't by chance. So we've worked really hard in our field to make sure that, and Erin has worked with her volunteer coordinators, everyone, to make sure that we're trained in wilderness first aid, which is its own animal with heat exhaustion and all of those things, dehydration, first aid, CPR, and using the AED. They also have experience in these situations, so that helped them to remain calm and handle this stress under the pressure. And frankly, that day, they saved Mr. Halffield's life, and for that, we are very grateful. So we know Erin is amazing, but I want to share one more tidbit about her. Since she has been the Senior Environmental Outreach Coordinator at the Oxbow for the last four years, she has grown that program fivefold. So she started with a small corps, small-ish corps of one hundred volunteers, and due to her outreach and engaging people and creating these skill-based volunteer opportunities, she has grown that to over five hundred volunteers. That's phenomenal. That equates to over, and she's brought in over twenty-two thousand hours of volunteerism, and that equates to six hundred thousand dollars approximately in-kind service to St. Lucie County. Erin exemplifies a high level of commitment and true compassion for the people in the community she serves. Her forethought towards actively preparing herself and the others that she works with for situations like this turned what truly could have been a deadly situation into this wonderful positive we get to celebrate today. And even in these times of COVID and social distancing, Erin has been engaging the volunteers and actively working with them, and there's plenty of environmental service opportunities out there, so if you're interested, contact St. Lucie County's website or seven, seven-two, seven-eight-five, five-eight-three-three. Congratulations, Erin.
It shows in your eyes. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to the regular agenda. County Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The items one through five are actually ratifications of emergency orders that the county administrator issued. Before I go into them, I'd just like to give a brief explanation of what we're doing and why we do it. The board, previous boards have delegated emergency authority to the county administrator to act in emergencies. It's typically done in a hurricane situation, where we have mandatory evacuations or curfews or any number of issues that come up. Unlike most counties or cities, what we do here in St. Lucie is that we have those emergency orders reviewed by the board at a subsequent meeting, at the next subsequent meeting. And we do that because ultimately, it's the board's responsibility to manage the emergencies in the county. And we put those on the regular agenda, not on the consent, so we can discuss them. We provide the board with weekly updates on all of the written orders, so the board has those real time. And we try to provide accurate and adequate information for the board's review. And I know the administrator shares this view. We very much want the board's input on this process. However, it's important in an emergency to act quickly, and the board doesn't always meet. Using the COVID-nineteen as an example, the governor issued a stay-at-home order in March. We issued our declaration of emergency in March seventeenth. The board didn't meet all in April and the last part of March and until early May. And so in that time period, when there was no meeting, we continued to operate the government as we should. And about thirty-five of the fifty emergency orders were in that timeframe. Subsequent to that, the board, of course, has been meeting. We have reduced the number of emergency orders, but there are still instances where the board needs to act. In July, you had a meeting on July seventh. Your next meeting is today, three weeks later. So we had issues that came up, but again, we've agendted those for board review. With that explanation, item one is a ratification of an order of the county administrator authorizing retaining TRC engineering at Clover Park. Clover Park is the home of the New York Mets. We have done extensive renovations in partnership with the Mets, but these water intrusion issues don't relate to those new improvements. Those are on the existing facility. It's a county-owned facility. It's on county-owned land. We needed to move immediately. We retained an expert to help us with the working on limiting the water intrusion and designing a fix. That's TRC Worldwide Engineering Restoration and Inspection. The emergency order was issued on June twenty-fourth. Staff recommends that the board ratify the emergency order by adopting the resolution two twenty dash thirty-nine. Mr. Tipton is available. The board has any questions?
Thank you. I just want to, I know that there's a lot of people out there that have had questions about this, so I do want to confirm that this is up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Anything over and above that, we would have to come back for more discussion. So this resolution that we're doing today is up to a twenty-five thousand dollar total. Is that correct?
I have the authority to do up to fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, because when I called over to Parks and Rec, they said that this was up to twenty-five thousand.
That's just this particular.
Right, that's what I'm saying. This particular. Right, that's what I'm saying, this particular item.
This particular item, that's correct.
Okay, because there was questions out there as to how much this was from residents, so when I called over to Parks and Rec, they had said that it was $16,000, but it was up to 25 for this order.
Yeah, sometimes we don't know exactly what the cost is going to be.
Right, that's why, I was just confirming that for the public.
That is correct.
Any questions? Comments?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, did you get that? Okay, Commissioners Zdowski made the motion, Commissioner Hutchinson seconded. And if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Number two?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item relates to emergency order 20-47, which authorized the execution of an agreement with RouteMatch software. This particular software is essential for the smooth operation of the county's transit system. As the board is aware, we changed vendors effective July 1st. That was a hard date. We needed to get the software. It's essential for the operation, no matter which vendor we have, the software is needed. It provides input for routes and pickups and things like that. The county administrator authorized the execution of an agreement with RouteMatch. A copy of the order is attached. Staff recommends that the board ratify that order and adopt resolution 20-159. Again, the county administrator is available for questions.
Any questions? If not, motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Madam Secretary, it was Commissioner Zdowski with Commissioner Bart second. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item three is ratification, proposed ratification of order number 20-45. This particular order relates to closing county beaches on the Fourth of July weekend. In the board's packet, there's a memo that suggests that all the counties south of St. Lucie, along the Atlantic Ocean, close their beaches. That would be Martin, Palm Beach, Broward, and Date. We determined, the administrator determined, that it would be appropriate to close our beaches, because we would likely attract significant numbers of residents. That would continue to be hotspots for the COVID-19 infection. In that regard, he issued and signed order number 20-45. Staff recommends that the board ratify this order by adopting the resolution attached to the memorandum. Again, Mr. Tipton is available for questions.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure it's very clear, these are done after the fact. This is not a re-closing of the beaches, this was back on Fourth of July weekend.
It is.
So, there's no confusion by our friends in the media.
It was, it was closed during the weekend. I believe it started on a Friday or something like that, and it went through Sunday.
Friday through Sunday, yes, sir.
But it's, it's, it is a past action.
Making sure we have clarification for those listening in.
Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Mitchell, and the second is Commissioner Bart. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item four relates to an emergency order signed by the county administrator concerning a culvert failure on Salvitz Road. It was a failed culvert. There were two holes approximately six feet into the pipe. The county engineer and public works director determined that the integrity of the road was jeopardized, and the traveling public was at risk. The engineering proposed, a division proposed a contract with Environmental Land Development and Anderson Andre Consulting Engineers to determine the cause of failure and replace the approximately eighty linear feet of the existing culvert. That was, the county administrator agreed with that and issued an emergency order 20-48. Staff recommends that the board ratify that order by resolution. Mr. Tipton is available for questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
As part of this, there was some misinformation put out in social media on this item specifically regarding using the COVID-19 issue as a way around our bid process. And so, I want clarification that not only is it responsible to do this in the issue of a safety matter, but it's also written into our purchasing manual. So, I want to make sure that the public understands that while anytime there's an emergency, whether it's in a pandemic, a hurricane, or any other situation, maybe flooding, where a road or some other issue of safety for public, there are options on the table in which we can utilize. So, Mr. McIntyre, will you explain if that is true?
That is accurate. It's paragraph 20.4 of the county's purchasing policy, authorizes the county administrator to declare an emergency. That can be done outside the hurricane or COVID situation, and has been done, in fact. And it's primarily on these kinds of things, where you have a culvert failure, where the traveling public is at risk, or there's some other public safety issue. But yes, that's exactly right. And that's, we did, we did this under an emergency order, because we're already in a state of emergency, and it seemed logical to do it that way, but it could have been done a different way.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification, because unfortunately, well-meaning individuals posting on social media often create more upset than is necessary. So, I'm glad I could have that clarified. For that, I will actually make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, it was Commissioner Zdowski with Mitchell second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And finally, Madam Chair, item five, at least finally, on the regular agenda, the, for the county attorney. State law requires that declaration of emergencies be declared and then extended every seven days, and we'll come back to that, it'll become important in a subsequent item. Every seven days, the county's Public Safety Director, Mr. Parrish, extends the declaration of emergency as needed in the event of an emergency, and that has been done in the COVID-19. We do take those to the board for ratification, similar to an emergency order, and we've done that in this case. Those orders are, extensions are June 30th, July 7th, July 14th, and July 21st. Mr. Parrish is in the audience. If the board has any questions, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments? No, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, it was Commissioner Hutchinson made the motion, Mitchell making the second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Now, we'll move to item B. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This item is to set the fiscal year 2021 proposed millage rates and the dates for the budget public hearings. Back on June 26th, the county administrators recommended budget was distributed to the board. Since that time, the board has reviewed and discussed the budget extensively over the last couple of weeks. And so, much of what you're going to see in today's presentation is a high-level summary of what was discussed in the last couple of weeks. So, this is more, more for the public's sake than the board's sake, as much of it is going to be very familiar to you. Today, the board will adopt the millage rates for the property tax notices, also referred to as the trim notices, after which time, the millage rates can be decreased throughout the budget process, but they cannot be increased. And then, in September, we'll come back, and the board will have two public hearings, one to adopt the tentative budget, and one to adopt the final budget. So, today, we're going to cover some background information on the county's budget, including property taxes, reserves, some of our challenges, and incremental changes in the budget. If we look back 10 years, the county's budget has decreased by $28 million, while the population has increased by approximately 43,000 people. We are continuing to serve a larger population with a reduced budget. The county is operating with 169 less positions than in 2007. For fiscal year 21, we will be operating with a workforce that is the size it was in 2003. And over that 18-year period, our population is projected to have grown by approximately 49% for 106,000 residents. With reduced properties, property values over the last 15 years or so, there have been adjustments to the millage rates to provide for needed services. The most recent adjustments were in fiscal year 16 and 18, when the board found it appropriate to increase the millage rates to fund increases in the sheriff's budget. In fiscal year 2007, the average taxes collected to fund the general fund and fine and forfeiture fund was $611 per person. If you adjust that rate for inflation, we would be collecting $795 per person today. However, the rate that we are currently levying equates to $547 per person. We are charging 31% or $248 less per person than in 2007, adjusted to reflect today's dollars. For fiscal year 21, the property values have increased 6.95% countywide, with the city of Port St. Lucie increasing just over 10%, the city of Fort Pierce increasing just over 6%, and the unincorporated area increasing by 3.38%. The formula for property taxes levied equals the millage rate times the assessed property value divided by 1,000. The taxes collected are influenced by two factors, the millage rate and the assessed value. The aggregate rate expresses the average tax rate. The first factor in the taxes levied is the millage rate. For the current fiscal year, the aggregate millage rate levied by all taxing districts in St. Lucie County was 22.5628 mils. Of that, roughly 39% or 8.8786 mils was levied by the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners, which includes funding for the constitutional officers, the dependent districts, and the municipal service taxing unit. For this year, we are recommending a millage rate reduction, but it will take a collective effort by all taxing agencies to be able to make a significant impact on the overall tax bill. We analyze the tax rates that each of the Board of County Commissioners in each county has control over. The services under the jurisdiction of each county can vary. The lowest aggregate millage rate was Monroe County at 3.3557 mils. The highest was Dixie County at 13 mils. And for the 67 Florida counties, the average millage rate was 8.0175 mils, while St. Lucie County's millage rate was 8.8786 mils, which was slightly above the average. The second factor in the taxes levied is the property value. This year, the highest per capita property value was Monroe County at 373,000. The lowest was Union County at 16,000. The statewide average taxable property value was 94,000 per capita. And St. Lucie County's value was $71,482 per capita, which is 24% lower than the average. Finally, we analyze the actual taxes that the Board of County Commissioners in each county has control over. This graph shows the lowest per capita for the Board of County Commissioners at $163, which was Union County, the highest at $1,351, which was Martin County, and the statewide average of $649. And St. Lucie County sits at $635, which is slightly less than the average. While St. Lucie County's Board of County Commissioners' millage rate is higher than the statewide average, the taxable value is lower than the statewide average, and when you take these two factors together, it results in the county taxes per capita being slightly below the statewide average. And again, this is for the county taxes levied under the Board of County Commissioners. Now, we take our focus to the county's reserves. As we deal with the impact of COVID-19, the things that we've done in the past are helping us financially now. In fiscal year 2015, we developed a five-year plan to stabilize the budget, so that our recurring expenses did not exceed our recurring revenue. While we will be facing a challenging budget process this year, those challenges would be much more difficult had the board not addressed the sustainability of the budget. For fiscal year 2020, the emergency reserve level is $33 million, 16 and 1/2 million for emergency reserves, 14 million for budget stabilization, which is what is used in the case of revenue loss, as we're seeing with COVID-19, and 2 and 1/2 million for transportation infrastructure. These amounts are currently flat amounts, which do not change as the overall budget changes. As we build a plan for our future, we look at working toward the goals recommended by our Citizen Budget Committee. First, we will be looking at replenishing the reserves that we're currently utilizing as a result of COVID-19, and establishing a policy for future replenishments. We also look at gradually increasing reserve levels and changing from a flat amount to a percent of budget, so the amounts adjust over time. And so, while the current environment contains a great deal of uncertainty, we are trying to start to plan for the next three years. In our forecast, we are including conservative revenue estimates that reflect small increases in property values and reductions in state revenue sharing and sales tax revenue due to the expected impacts of COVID-19 on the economy. Our model includes a 2% cost of living adjustment across all the Board of County Commission Departments and Constitution Officers, and 9% increases in health insurance, while other expenses grow at an estimated 2%. We have also analyzed the county's current debt. We have some debt coming off the books in next fiscal year and the year after, which is reflected in the model. Some of the things that our financial model doesn't address are potential storm expenses, unanticipated staff increase is related to maintenance needs, and some capital needs that we foresee coming up in the future, such as our replacement of our financial system, that when we go to replace it, will, will be costly. We do expect to need that in the next five years, but currently, it currently is not financially feasible within the, within the next three years. So, this slide just puts in words all those things I just said, so I'm not going to repeat, repeat the actual information, that's more just for the record. I'm skipping around here. So, the budget process covers many challenges and opportunities. We have highlighted five areas, but this list is certainly not exhaustive of all the opportunities in front of us. First, this year, we have COVID-19. From a financial perspective, COVID-19 causes uncertainty about the economy. We don't know how strong or long the recovery will be, and we don't know how it will affect our property values. From an operations standpoint, county staff has become very flexible as a result of COVID-19. This was evident in the county's ability to reassign hundreds of employees to take on new roles, as some roles were, were less necessary as, as services were being, were being ramped down. But at the same time, additional duties were needed to, to help cleaning, to help get, to help getting food out in the community. And so, so that, that flexibility has really shown, you know, really shown through in this process. That flexibility also applies to the budget, as staff has made adjustments to their normal spending in order to help mitigate the impacts of unanticipated expenses and revenue loss related to the pandemic. Our next challenge is beach renourishment. Resiliency continues to be a central issue, as seen by a $2.4 million emergency truck haul for the Fort Pierce Beaches year. The cost of erosion is being pushed to local governments, as the cost of construction rises and federal and state funding is shrinking. Despite this, the county continues its effort to maintain the quality of life, which our beaches are an essential part. Residents and tourists alike enjoy our 22 miles of pristine and uncrowded beaches. And with this in mind, the erosion district continues to pursue three primary objectives in managing the coastline. Throwing up the emergency reserves depleted over the last several years from successive storms, the Fort Pierce Beach and inlet management funding and projects, and the proposed federal South County Beach restoration projects. Our next opportunity was through building Our next opportunity was through building maintenance. And there are many key initiatives in which the facilities group within the county has undertaken to positively change the growing needs of the county while balancing the limited resources. First, they've continuously implemented forward-thinking strategies to tackle the short-term needs of a large number of aging buildings while planning for a long-term future. They're also creating and enhancing safe and secure work environments. Another critical initiative is telework. Facilities Administration has piloted the remote work plan for St. Lucie County, and COVID-19 has propelled this initiative across all county departments. The final but critical key initiative is to evaluate underutilized properties and reduce square footage. The telework option has provided more empty spaces and under-existing roofs that allow other departments to move around to create more efficient service to the customers. And Facilities is taking steps to reduce the county's overall building footprint through consolidation of personnel, working from home, telework, or work from shared spaces. These are all initiatives that Facilities has championed, and they have all made the county's response to COVID-19 a lot more nimble. Our next challenge was the county compensation. At the beginning of this fiscal year, the county engaged in a compensation study. The overall findings of the study were that the county offers a lucrative benefit package that most non-bargaining positions are aligned with the current market. And this is largely due to adjustments to salaries and health insurance that incurred two years ago. While non-bargaining positions are in line with the market, many union positions lag behind the market. And the study recommends a new pay grade structure for the bargaining positions to better reflect the current market. The recommended budget has a placeholder of two percent for a cost of living allowance and a nine percent increase for health insurance. However, we are hopeful that, as we've done in the past, we will be able to achieve savings in our health insurance program that will allow us to fund the compensation recommendations. We are in the process of reviewing our claims experience and exploring options to make this possible. Our final challenge slash opportunity that we focus on is the jail population as it creates a higher financial risk environment for the county commission. There's increased risk for higher inmate medical costs, wear-on tear in facilities, and the probability of having to build additional jail beds, higher correctional staffing, and operating costs. Efficiencies at the front end of the system or before somebody is sentenced are needed to help reduce the cost. The recommended budget includes an additional one million dollars for inmate medical expenses and an additional two hundred and sixty-seven thousand for replacement of the jail air-conditioning system, which is only partial funding of a five-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar project. Now we move our focus on to the changes in the general fund and fine and forfeiture budget for the coming year. The additional property taxes that would have been generated in the general fund and fine and forfeiture fund next year are ten point eight million dollars, and this was as a result of the property value increases. However, the Board's desire to reduce the millage rate as well as reductions in anticipated revenue related to COVID-19 bring that revenue projection down to seven point nine million dollars. And so we take that seven point nine million dollars and we apply increases in several of our mandated costs as well as changes to the constitutional officer and judicial agency budget. We also look at addressing the anticipated increase in inmate medical cost and a phased-in approach to replenishing the reserves, which are being impacted due to the revenue loss related to COVID-19. Once we apply all of these things, that leaves just under four million dollars available for allocation. The available resources are far less than the requested budget for both the Board of County Commissioners and the sheriff. Half of the available resources, or roughly two million dollars, have been allocated to the sheriff. This leaves three million dollars in requests from the sheriff's office that are not funded in the recommended budget. The sheriff's requested budget, not including COVID expenses, was for ninety-one million dollars. The recommended budget is for eighty-eight million. Staff is working with the sheriff's office to try and find some ways to find funding or savings to help meet the sheriff's office needs. The other half of the available resources have been allocated to Board of County Commissioners' operations, which left thirteen million dollars in Board of County Commissioner departments requests that are not funded in the recommended budget. The half that is allocated to Board operations are allocated to the Florida retirement system increases, which are mandated by the state, the cost of living and health insurance increases that I mentioned on the previous slide, and it also includes a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar allocation to address traffic issues on Indian River Drive and partial funding to replace the jail air-conditioning system. The Board's direction since last year has been to develop a budget which includes a millage rate reduction and addresses the county's reserves. This budget does that by incorporating a point one-one-zero-eight aggregate millage rate reduction and beginning to replenish the reserves. The recommended millage rates include reductions in the general fund and mosquito control fund millages and increases in the unincorporated municipal service taxing unit and erosion control district millage. The Board will also begin to levy a millage rate in the new South Hutchinson Island Beach Erosion MSTU, which will only affect the residents of South Hutchinson Island. Overall, when all these millage changes are taken into account, it equates to a point one-one-zero-eight millage rate reduction. And the dates that are proposed for the budget hearings are September tenth and September twenty-fourth. Both of those are Thursdays at 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers. So at this point, I'd like the Board to consider setting the proposed millage rates as well as the budget hearing dates.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Does your move approve staff recommendations?
Is there a second? Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Zdowski with Commissioner Hutchinson making the second. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will do planning and development. I believe it's Chris. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Chris McCrayne, Associate Planner with the Planning Development Services Department. And today I'll be presenting item number nine C one, a major site plan for self-storage warehouse to be known as American Storage Solutions. The subject property is located on the west side of Twenty-Fifth Street, approximately seventeen hundred feet south of St. Lucie Boulevard in Fort Pierce. The three-point-three-acre vacant parcel is located within the San Lucie Plaza subdivision, which consists of unimproved right-of-way. As a condition of approval, a portion of Tampa Trail Boulevard from Twenty-Fifth Street to the subject property will be improved to county standards as well as connection to utilities. As seen on the zoning map, the industrial light zoning district is situated to the west and south with the RS four residential single-family zoning district to the north and east. The industrial future land use is situated to the south and west of the subject property with the residential urban future land use located to the north and east. And the city of Fort Pierce jurisdiction exists to the east and south of the subject property. The major site plan proposes four phases of development with associated right-of-way improvements for site access, access control gate landscaping, and onsite water management. Access improvement to Tampa Trail Boulevard, stormwater utilities. Parking and landscaping will be completed within phase one of the development. In addition to these improvements, phase one includes the construction of two sixteen-foot metal canopies providing fifty-one parking spaces for boats and RVs and a eight-hundred-square-foot office space, which will also be utilized for onsite security. Phase two proposes a seventy-six-hundred-square-foot, one-story metal storage building with fifty-six storage bays. Phase three proposes twenty-one-thousand-six-hundred square feet, three-story metal storage building with two-hundred-and-four storage bays. And phase four proposes a four-thousand-fifty-square-foot, one-story metal storage building with forty storage bays. Submitted tree survey with site plan overlay depicts the trees to be impacted by the development, including seventy pines, ten oaks, and sixteen palms. The clearing of the site allows for the necessary changes to be made to the site, including the grading of the land and improved stormwater. The submitted landscape plan provides an eight-foot masonry wall along the northern and western property lines and required landscaping surrounding the entire perimeter of the site. With the removal of onsite vegetation, the applicant is required to mitigate for five-hundred-and-eighty-six inches and sixteen palm trees, which requires the applicant to pay a fee in lieu of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars to the St. Lucie County Tree Mitigation Fund. Staff funds the major site plan to meet the standards of review set forth in section eleven oh-two oh-seven of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners grant approval of the major site plan to be known as American Storage Solutions, subject to the following conditions: Prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit or exemption, the proposed fee in lieu of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars shall be provided to the St. Lucie County Tree Mitigation Fund. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all onsite category-one invasive species shall be eradicated. Prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, an updated gopher-tortoise survey shall be provided. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, Tampa Trail Boulevard shall be constructed to county standards. And prior to the issuance of any building permit within the project, the developers shall enter into an agreement with the county regarding the improvements at Tampa Trail. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available to answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any comments or questions? Everybody's quiet. Let's talk or make a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Mitchell with Commissioner Hutchinson making the second. I'm Commissioner Bartz, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bartz. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am. Is the applicant here?
The agent is, I believe.
Okay. I just want to say congratulations. We're glad you're here. It's nice to see some things coming down that direction. So thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to public hearings. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I make my presentation, I believe Mr. Tipton and Mr. Spurber have a brief presentation to introduce the topic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Madam Chair and Commissioners, Agenda Item Ten A one is a public hearing that provides for your consideration the ratification of two executive orders as well as the possible adoption of an ordinance, all of these relating to the requirement of face coverings as we deal with the impacts of COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus. I'm going to provide a brief update on our COVID numbers this morning and then introduce Mr. Clint Spurber, the St. Lucie County Health Department Administrator, for a few remarks. At that point, we will turn it over to Mr. McIntyre to walk you through the documents for your consideration today. And if I could get the PowerPoint up, please. We have discussed the issue of face coverings on two prior occasions, and the Board took the important step to require face coverings for frontline employees back on July first. On July thirteenth, based on the advice of our hospital leaders and our medical leadership, I issued an executive order that required face coverings for the general public. That additional order was necessary, in my opinion, due to the fast-changing nature of the pandemic in our community. We want to be a data-driven organization and use that data in our decision-making, and the data was changing rapidly. What I will share with you today shows that we still have a fairly dynamic COVID environment. This first chart shows that in terms of new cases, from June fifteenth to July fifteenth, we saw an increase of two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three cases. From July fifteenth to July twenty-seventh, or just less than a two-week period of time, we saw cases increase at an even faster rate. For fatalities, from June fifteenth to July fifteenth, we saw an increase of ninety-four percent. For the past twelve days, we've seen an increase of forty-seven percent. So we are tracking basically at that same pace. Next, we look at the percentage of people testing positive in our area above the maximum desired rate of ten percent, and we see that St. Lucie County is higher than that, twelve out of the last fourteen days. Although we are much higher than our fourteen-day average rate back on June fifteenth, which was six point five percent, we are almost two percentage points lower than the thirteen point five percent rate back on July tenth. All that to say that we are trending in the right direction when you look at those points. Lastly, an update on hospitalizations. First, our hospitals have some capacity to handle additional COVID patients if needed. The COVID patient increase, as you've heard from our hospital executives on another day, has seen COVID hospitalization spike. To update these numbers, from June nineteenth to July twenty-sixth, COVID cases tripled and COVID patients on ventilators have quadrupled during that same period of time. In response to this and out of concern for their staff and ability to handle a surge in COVID patients, the hospitals have either eliminated elective procedures entirely, and that would be Lonwood and St. Lucie Medical, or greatly reduced them, like Cleveland Clinic. Currently, St. Lucie County, and I'm just talking about the Board of County Commissioner departments, have twenty-six essential employees out of service right now, either having been tested positive, at home quarantined with a family member who is positive, or are awaiting test results. I'm glad to share that although we've had three employees hospitalized at one time, they have all been thankfully discharged. And with that, I will now turn it over to Mr. Spurber for his remarks.
Thank you, Howard. Well, Madam Chair?
Good morning.
Commissioners. So to somewhat restate what Howard was mentioning, our updated numbers as of today, this morning, is four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven cases. Four thousand, seven hundred and seven are in residence. We have had an additional six fatalities, so we are at one-ten, although one of the individuals is not from Florida. We have, from a facility perspective, we have a total of eight hundred and three cases associated with types of facilities. So whether that's a group home, it's just a living facility, or the jail, it's a total of eight hundred and three cases. So I do want to cite, and it will be fairly quick, but on June thirtieth, a research article came out from the National Academy of Sciences of the United States of America titled "Identifying Airborne Transmission Is A Dominant Route For The Spread Of COVID-19." So I do want to talk a little bit about the abstract of it. So it says, "Various mitigation measures have been implemented to fight the coronavirus disease pandemic, including widely adopted social distancing and mandated face covering. However, assessing the effectiveness of these intervention practices hinges on the understanding of virus transmission, which remains uncertain." Here we show that airborne transmission is highly virulent and represents- Here we show that airborne transmission is highly virulent and represents a dominant route to spread the disease." So they analyzed a trend in mitigation measures in Wuhan, China, Italy, and New York City from January twenty-third to May ninth, and they illustrate the impacts and mitigation members are discernible from the trends of the pandemic. So their analysis revealed that the difference with and without mandated face coverings represents a determinant in shaping the pandemic trends in those three epicenters. The protective measures alone significantly reduce the number of infections, that is, by over seventy-eight thousand in Italy from April sixth to May ninth, and over sixty-six thousand in New York City from April seventeen to May ninth. So other mitigation strategies such as social distancing implemented in the United States are insufficient by themselves in protecting the public. We conclude that wearing a face mask in public corresponds to the most effective means to prevent interhuman transmission, and this inexpensive practice, in conjunction with simultaneous social distancing, quarantine, and contract tracing, represents the most likely fighting opportunity to stop the COVID-19 pandemic prior to development of a vaccine. What I would also like to include in that statement is to follow guidance to stay at home once sick or if you are exposed. And businesses should also have plans to help workers safe and to treat them safely and support them during this time. So regarding face masks, Department of Health has distributed over a hundred-and-eighty-thousand face masks throughout St. Lucie County, including a hundred-and-twelve-thousand-and-four peers to forty-nine churches with the help of dozens of sororities, fraternities, associations, councils, including also the Public Safety Department. I've said publicly and privately that my role is not to create policy. I provide facts, guidance, and resources. I would hope that we do not overvalue a motion by putting it on a pedestal. The leading scientific minds in the United States and around the world conclude that face coverings are a critical tool in the fight against COVID-19 that could reduce the spread of the disease, particularly when used universally within communities. That's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Thanks for all your work over this period of time. There's a lot going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I'll take over again, hopefully with input from the county administrator and perhaps Mr. Spurber as needed in the event of questions or comments. There are three items that we're going to be taking together. I'll address all of them at the same time, although they will require separate votes. The first two items are ratification of emergency orders, similarly what we did already. We put these because they relate to the face covering. The first item is the one that Mr. Tipton signed on July the thirteenth. It mandated face coverings in public with certain exemptions. We're recommending that the board ratify that order. The second item is an emergency order twenty-dash-fifty, which sets up a civil citation procedure. It's the preferred method of enforcement from a staff perspective, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on Item C. Item C is a draft ordinance. It would, if adopted, it is not an emergency ordinance, so it requires a three, on a majority vote, not a supermajority like the emergency ordinance we did on July first. We've advertised this properly. It would, if adopted, repeal the county administrator's emergency order. One of the disadvantages under the state law with the emergency orders is they are enforceable by criminal penalties. That's not something that, from a staff perspective, we favor or are in support of, but we had to move quickly at the time. Again, as I stated, the board last met on July seventh. The administrator felt, based on the metrics or the numbers, that immediate action was needed, and he took it. We have, though, decided that it's better policy for the board to adopt an ordinance which can be enforced by civil penalties, not criminal, and that's the main reason we are proposing the ordinance. We are, I would like to propose a couple of changes to the ordinance, really just updating the facts in paragraph twenty-two on the whereas clauses. We had in there July tenth because when we submit, we have to submit these two weeks in advance of the meeting. So as of July tenth, there were two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty positive cases. As of July twenty-fourth, which is a little more data than what we just heard, there were four-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five cases, positive cases in the county. On July tenth, there were sixty-one cases, fatalities, and on July twenty-fourth, there are ninety-six, so they've gone up substantially in a two-week period. The positivity rates over the past fourteen days is now eleven-point-two percent, so it's slightly down, as Mr. Tipton indicated. In addition, in paragraph eighteen in the whereas clauses, yesterday, a case came out of Palm Beach County. They also adopted an emergency order, ordinance on face coverings. It was challenged in court. They're one of many local governments that have been challenged, but the court in that case denied the motion for temporary injunction against Palm Beach County's face covering ordinance, stating, this is a quote from the court, "This court will not second-guess the manner in which a co-equal branch of government sought to discharge its sacred duty to protect the general public." That's consistent with the ruling in Leon County and also in Alachua County. Madam Chair, the only other item that the board may wish to consider is, the only difference really in the exemptions that we proposed that the board may want to consider is, in the context of a gym, exercising indoors in a gym, Mr. Tipton's emergency order says that you have to wear a mask even if you are social distancing. That was what was proposed at that time. We're proposing to modify that at a staff level, that if you are engaged in indoor exercise and you're social distancing, you would not have to wear a mask. So that's something the board in its deliberations can consider. The ordinance requires a public hearing, Madam Chair. That will allow for five minutes of public comment, as opposed to three minutes for a general public comment. We have received a number of emails from citizens on the mask. Those have been distributed to the board for the board's reading. We probably should acknowledge receipt of those for the record. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks, unless Mr. Tipton has any additional.
Yes, sir.
We're ready, I think, if the board is ready, to proceed with the public hearing.
Okay. Madam Chair, can I just ask for clarification? Mr. McIntyre, with the update that you gave on the twenty-second updating due, are you proposing that we change to the numbers that Clint had given out as being the most recent?
I didn't.
I know at some point you've got to put a stop to it. That's why I'm asking the question.
That's right. That's exactly, we can do that if you'd like. I use the numbers that I got from the Health Department as of July twenty-fourth. That's what I put in there, but if we want to, in any motion that, if you want to update the numbers, I didn't have those numbers that he presented.
No, I understand that. That's why I was asking.
His are today, as of today, I believe.
Yeah, that was actually updated, those are better numbers than what I had, actually. But what Clint does, what the Health.
Better than kind of a strange work.
That's true. More as updated as you can get. One of the things that the Health Department does is every Friday, they go ahead and release the report, and that's what Mr. McIntyre was basing his numbers off of. So I think that's actually a good point to report or to look to, was the Health Department report of that Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there any questions before I open up public comment? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody from the public wishing to come forward? If there is, we'll need you to come to the podium, state your name, address. You'll have five minutes. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public comment and we'll come back to the board. Just for clarification, Mr. McIntyre, I'm sorry, there is somebody, so I will reopen Okay, I need you to state your name and address for the record. We're recorded. Thank you.
It's Melissa Chiplet, and the address is five-three, or it's Port San Luis.
Okay, can you state the address, though?
Oh, yeah. Five-three-four-one Northwest Connolly Drive, Port San Luis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, your amendment, whatever you're trying to amend today, is that to take off the criminal for the face mask? That's what I'm understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to confirm that yet?
Yes, ma'am, that's accurate. On the ordinance, which is Item C, if the board adopts that, it would repeal the administrator's order which has criminal penalties. The ordinance only provides for civil penalties.
I think, for me, I'm, and I feel like it's.
Can you come a little bit closer?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I feel like, in some ways, we're backpedaling with things. It's like, I feel like at the time, you know, Tipton made the motion to just file for mandatory mask, and then here we have the criminal penalties at that point in time, but now we're going back on all that, and I feel like it's kind of like a aha moment where obviously there was something wrong with that, and now, you know, in my opinion, they should just remove the entire order and not replace it with anything, because the studies are coming out, the numbers already are coming out in Florida that they're wrong anyways, with Orlando and other things, the Santa system investigation and that, that the masks don't work. That is my comment.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Anybody else? Okay, now we'll close public comment. We'll come back to the board. Is there questions?
Madam Chair, I just wanted for Mr. McIntyre to clarify in the fact that the emergency order included the state's provision under emergency order. And so with that said, the challenge was for the board to bring an ordinance forward, but it had to have a period of time in which public notice was in place. We didn't have that timing. So as part of that conversation, understanding that the board had indicated support for moving forward with the mandatory masks, but were not as supportive of a criminal component because our goal was, and is, and has, and shall be, to reduce the number of transmissions and to protect the public. So will you acknowledge that it was a timing issue more than it was from an ordinance to an emergency order?
Yes, again, it absolutely was a timing issue. The administrator believed at the time that immediate action was needed. He is not, under the state law, he's authorized to issue emergency orders with the board consent, which he has, but the penalty is provided under state law as criminal. That's basically state law. So he did that on July the thirteenth. However, again, from a staff perspective, and I believe the board supports this, we have never really wanted criminal penalties. We don't think it's appropriate in this circumstance. So the board has the ability, under state law, to adopt civil penalties rather than criminal, and that's what we're proposing that you do by adopting the ordinance. It will repeal the emergency order. It will repeal, actually, your emergency order for workers, and now you'll have an ordinance that just applies civil penalties. It'll have the same provisions that the emergency order did, with that one exception on gyms that you'll need to discuss, but essentially it'll be the same impact, except it will be civil penalties rather than criminal.
Okay, and I will share that as of this morning, I belong to several gyms, and I'm getting emails now from the gyms that they are requiring mandatory masks, and is it not true that individual-owned facilities can implement their own policies for wearing masks, such as Publix, Walmart, gyms, other stores?
They can. It's up to the individual business, and in fact, as you mentioned, a couple businesses that have done that, Publix, Walmart, I believe, are two that come to mind that have implemented on their own, independent of any local government action, a face mask policy. A gym could do that as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I just want to clarify what was just stated. If this is a mandatory order, then the businesses have to comply to this.
They do.
They don't have a right to say they want masks or don't want to require a mask.
I think what Commissioner Zdowski was saying is that, let's say, a majority of the board decided that face masks were not appropriate in a gym with social distancing, which is what we're proposing.
Right.
And let's say a majority of the board agrees with that. I think what Commissioner Zdowski was suggesting, a gym on its own could be stricter than that.
Okay. That's why I want clarification.
Not more lenient. They'd have to comply with the order, but if they want to be stricter than what the county is proposing, they have the right to do that.
But in this order that is getting ready to be voted on, the only exclusion is the gyms, that as long as they're exercising, this ordinance is stating they don't have to wear the mask unless the gym wants it to be mandatory. Every other business has to comply to wearing masks.
Right. We do have a lot of exemptions. They're the same as.
I'm in.
Right. I mean, we have a medical exemption, a religious exemption, other exemptions.
Which I also need clarification for that as well, because I witnessed two different times over the last week in businesses where there were residents in there trying to shop. One lady was having an anxiety attack and asthma attack. The store actually asked her to leave because she refused to put on her mask. The Fort Pierce Police Department was contacted and called, and she was issued a trespassing warrant. She had a prescription inhaler in her purse, and so the medical exemption that's being put on this, I think that there is a lot of confusion with the businesses, because the businesses are thinking you have to have like a doctor's letter in your hand for that. They're not understanding that if you say you have asthma and you have your inhaler or whatever, that that does exclude you. So I don't know that the education's being done, because I have witnessed, the other day in Publix, actually, a lady having on a mask, having an anxiety attack, and sadly, nobody actually reached out to her. So she actually was having a full-blown asthma attack because she has PT, or not asthma, anxiety, because she had PTSD, and she has been complying to wearing the mask, and this is just something that happened to go through a trigger at that point in time when she was there. So there are still things that need to be educated, and there are still issues out there that we need clarification on this. So what do we do to let the businesses know that you do not have to have a prescription letter from the physician?
We are trying to do a frequently asked questions website. Mr. Tipton, perhaps you'd take this question. So I can take it initially. I don't want to.
I've got it. I've got it.
It's okay. I mean, basically, we have a broad medical exemption. It doesn't require a doctor's note. We did that intentionally. That was on purpose. In the context of the first example, if they were excluding the woman, they were doing it on their own as a business, not because of the county's order. The county's order would have allowed her to go in the building.
I do think, Madam Chair and Commissioners, there is an education component to this. I think the first couple of weeks, we've seen a greater level of compliance and understanding about how this works, and so I think some of those rough spots have been worked through. We are and have resumed our weekly briefings on giving the updates, and we include in that to make sure that people understand that there are exemptions for this and that we need to understand that, and so we do include that as part of our education effort.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that for the most part, people are complying. I just think there's still, the businesses are, to me, what I'm witnessing is, when you go in there and somebody does try to enter without a mask, the businesses feel that they're going to be arrested and be in trouble and shut down if they don't enforce this law of having everybody have a mask. That's what I'm hearing from the businesses and from the residents within these. So I think we still have a long way to go with educating them to let them understand our intent, so I just need those clarified out there. So is there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barts, do you have anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I would add is what I have seen is much more compliance. We do have some businesses that make their own rules, which are fine, and I have actually been hit in some of these businesses and just made a comment. Do you know what the county has done with mandating masks? And most of them comply automatically. So I do see that this has helped. Now we wait and see what happens to the numbers, and hopefully they go down. But that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
I would just like to know, have any, to your knowledge, Howard or Dan, have any site?
I would just like to know, have any, to your knowledge, Howard or Dan, have any citations been written in the 13 days since it's been implemented?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Not to my knowledge either. I would add, one topic I neglected to mention, but it's an important one, is the expiration of the, of the ordinance. As proposed, we, it would expire upon the declaration, the expiration of the declaration of emergency, and as we heard, those are every seven days. So if the emergency is allowed to expire, the ordinance automatically expires. In addition, the board has the ability, upon majority vote, to repeal the ordinance at any point in time, and we've also provided that Mr. Tipton will be providing the board with weekly updates from the Department of Health on the numbers. So if the numbers or the metrics start showing a positive trend where a mask is not needed in the future, then that's something the board can, and Mr. Tipton will address with you. But those are, those are items that are in the expiration section. Madam Chair, at this point, unless the board has further questions or discussion, it would be appropriate to consider item A. That would be to, we're proposing that you adopt resolution 20-500, which would ratify Mr. Tipton's emergency order imposing the face covering issue 20-49. Ultimately, again, if you get to item C and approve that, that will repeal that as of July 30th, but right now, it's in effect. We're asking that you ratify. Staff recommends approval of item A.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, Commissioner Zdowski made the motion. Mitchell, second, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
No, ma'am. Item B?
Item B, Madam Chair, would ratify Mr. Tipton's emergency order 20-50, which sets out citation procedures from a civil perspective. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so, Madam Secretaries, Commissioner Mitchell, with Zdowski being the second, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Next, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item C is the actual ordinance, which we've been talking about. This item, as we've been presented, would repeal order 20-49, along with the emergency ordinance that the board passed on July 1st. It would be effective on July 30th. It would impose only civil penalties. It also would allow gyms, people in gyms to wear, not wear masks if they're social distancing. Staff recommends approval.
Is there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second with a question. Does the motion maker include the changes that the attorney has indicated on the floor, as well as the updated infections and death rates as of today?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, sir. I think it's actually July 24th is what we recommended, because that's the weekly report. But we certainly acknowledge on the record, Mr. Spurber's updated information, which actually reflect a further increase.
Thank you.
We're now over 100 deaths, I think, 110, I thought he said.
So Commissioner Bartz made the motion. Commissioner Zdowski, did you second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Madam Secretary?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Townsend?
No, ma'am. Okay. That brings us to a close of today. Is there any commissioner that has comments? If not, I want to thank Ms. Alaina for being with us today. Welcome to government. You can sit here with us for a second, though. Hang on one second.
We've got a couple more to go.
Unless you're excited to get down. And, Mr. Tipton, do you have anything to add?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, just that we are on a normal meeting schedule for the month of August. Our next board meeting will be August 4th at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. We have our informal or workshop meeting on August the 11th. That is a nine o'clock meeting, as is the next board meeting then on August 18th, also at nine o'clock here in these chambers.
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder, once we adjourn from the Board of County Commissioners meetings, we will take over under the erosion and mosquito-controlled district. So, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public you'd like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of June 16th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Mitchell and a second by Commissioner Zdowski. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to today's consent agenda, is there any item in Commissioner which is pulled for discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
So motion and a second by Commissioner Zdowski and Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Forgot.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
There is no regular agenda items, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
I will call to order the mosquito control district. Is there any general public comment? I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 meeting.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Does anyone who want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Seeing not, I need a motion to approve the warrant list 33 through 39.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. And there are no regular items scheduled for the regular agenda, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Good job.